Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Cersei.
Here.
All right, looking at our agenda this evening, we just have two proclamations that we will talk about in a moment. After this evening, next week on Wednesday, May 15th, at our regular meeting here, we will actually have a reception before our regular meeting from 6:30 to 7:30. It's our committee volunteer reception, so I hope everyone can attend that. And then after the reception, our voting session will be the second reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 tax rate, the FY 2020 storm management budget, our FY 2020 budget, a resolution supporting regionalism in the Washington metropolitan area, and a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our work session on May 15th will be a parking management plan. And then our next meeting will be Wednesday, May 22nd. At that time, we'll have our voting session will be a first reading ordinance reestablishing the Safe Roadways Committee. Our work sessions that evening will be a request for payment in lieu of taxes for Parkview Towers, an FY 2020 budget process review, and a work session on the closure of one lane of Laurel Avenue. On Wednesday, May 29th, the city council will not meet. And then we'll meet again on Wednesday, June 5th. This meeting will be at 7:30, and it will be at a recreation center on New Hampshire Avenue. We will have two proclamations, one regarding Immigrant Heritage Month, and the other on Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I want to remind my colleagues to please wear your orange that day on our meeting on June 5th. Our voting session will be the first reading ordinance regarding payment in lieu of taxes for Parkview Towers, second reading ordinance reestablishing the Safe Roadways Committee, and tentatively a resolution regarding the closure of one lane of Laurel Avenue. Our work session that evening will be a Board of Elections Recommendations for City Charter and Code Amendments. And then just as a reminder, on Wednesday, June 12th, we will have the public hearing on small cell wireless regulations. Those admin regs are up on the city website if people would like to take a look at them. All right, moving next to our two proclamations this evening. The first one is Bike to Work Day, which is on February, excuse me, February. Ah, sorry, Friday, May 17.
Shilling.
Yeah, it would be. I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas bicycle commuting is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion, and conserve energy; and whereas bicycle commuting benefits both employees and employers through better employee health and fitness, as well as reduced commuting and parking costs; and whereas the City of Tacoma Park is implementing bikeways improvements throughout the city to encourage and facilitate safe and convenient travel by bicycle; and whereas the Capitol Bike Shares Regional Bike Sharing System continues to expand with over 500 stations in Maryland, the District of Columbia, and Virginia; and whereas the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments promotes bicycling and organizes Bike to Work Day along with the Washington Area Bicyclist Association; and whereas Tacoma Park Housing and Community Development Staff coordinates two Bike to Work Day pit stops in the city in partnership with local businesses; and whereas the week of May 13th to the 19th is National Bike to Work Week, which promotes bicycling as a viable means of transportation to and from work." Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council staff and residents here proclaim Friday, May 17th, 2019, as Bike to Work Day, and encourage all residents and local employees to register to Bike to Work by visiting www.biketworkmetrodc.org. So, and I just want to very much thank our staff for putting this together, and thank you very much, and I hope for sunny day on Friday. The second proclamation today is in recognition of Public Service Recognition Week, May 5th through the 11th. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated during the first week of May ever since 1985, to honor those who serve at the federal, as federal, state, county, and local government employees; and whereas the actions of public employees enhance the quality of life and jurisdictions across the nation; and whereas the City of Tacoma Park is served by many talented and dedicated public employees who help make the city such a great place to live, work, and play; and whereas the functions performed by these employees include general administration and council support, information systems, human resources, finance, housing and community development, police and public safety, public works, recreation, communications, and library services, among other things; and whereas the week of May 5th to the 11th is this year's Public Service Recognition Week. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council staff and residents hereby proclaim May 5th to the 11th, 2019, as Public Service Recognition Week, and encourage all residents and others who enjoy the services provided by our public employees to join in celebrating their accomplishments and contributions to the city." So I just want to say thank you very much to all of our staff for that. All right, those are the proclamations out of the way. Our first order of business is actually a presentation this evening from the president of Washington Adventist Hospital. If he would, if you want to join us, thank you for coming this evening. I think we have a PowerPoint presentation that you brought with you, and I will just turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, City Council. My name is Eric Wengsnus, and it's a pleasure to be here. I've had the honor of serving as president of Washington Adventist Hospital since September of 2014, and I've been able to address this group before, and it's a pleasure to be back again. Tonight, I want to give an update on the campus, on the new campus in White Oak, and the transition of acute care from Tacoma Park to White Oak, as well as the plans for repurposing the Tacoma Park campus. So that is my goal tonight, and I will do my best to deliver on that. I want to start going forward by kind of going back, and most of you have seen this before, maybe not in person, some have seen it in person, some from photos, but this is the original Washington Sanitarium that opened in 1907 on our site, and was known as the Washington Sanitarium. Forty beds, 12 staff. People would come here for length of stay oftentimes of 30, 40, 50 days to be treated for issues, oftentimes with diet, with rest, with massage, water therapy. And I love the poll quote from the Washington Post there at the bottom. So this is a meaningful campus. And I start with this, just to put a stake in the ground about the importance of this campus and the legacy for Adventist Healthcare, and kind of the bittersweet nature of what I have to share tonight. So while we're excited about building a new hospital, we needed a new hospital, the community needed a new facility. To move from Tacoma Park that's been our home for that long is difficult. It's difficult for staff, it's difficult for physicians, and I know it's challenging to the community as well, so it's important to acknowledge that. This looks familiar to all of us. This is the current hospital. We went from 40 beds and 12 staff to over 200 beds and almost 1,400 staff with the those key service lines, and we remain very busy. We see almost 2,400 deliveries in the obstetric women's services unit, about 46,000 visits to the emergency department. And we're very proud that we're a contributor to the community, and we measure this every year. And last year, we returned about $35 million to our service area in goods and services. Adventist Healthcare were part of a system, of course, Adventist Healthcare based in Gaithersburg that returned over $70 million to the community. So August 25th, 2019, a little over three months, we will be moving from the acute care services from our Tacoma Park campus to the new White Oak Medical Center in White Oak. So there on the left, you'll see a architectural rendering what they promised us the hospital would look like, and on the right, you can see a fairly recent photograph of the hospital. So it's coming in there. What's missing just to the left is a medical pavilion, which is an outpatient building, almost 170,000 square feet for physician offices and some outpatient services. That's going to lag the opening of the hospital by seven or eight months, and I'll talk a little bit about that because that informs what will remain on the campus for the near term. I just wanted to mention that we are changing the name, and the name of the facility has actually changed over time. It was Washington Sanitarium, Washington Sanitarium and a Hospital, and then Washington Adventist Hospital. And oftentimes, those name changes corresponded with building, with expansion of services and care. When we knew that we were going to build a new hospital and move a new hospital, we held some focus groups to understand better about the name. And we got pretty straight feedback from patients and the community members that they appreciated a name that was synonymous with the area, and we're moving to White Oak, so that resonated with them. And one thing we deal with is confusion over Washington Hospital Center. So we've all heard of that hospital just a few miles to the south of us, and so the decision was made on the day of the move, we'll move, we'll change from Washington Adventist Hospital to the Adventist Healthcare White Oak Medical Center. Wanted to show a map that gives you, if you don't know where we're moving, this will show you graphically, you can see the Tacoma Park campus, and then the lighter blue H above that is where the new hospital's going to be located. And I will point out that Mayor Stewart, I believe, or Suzanne, told me that the hospital actually isn't in Prince George's County. So that was, the graphic designers took some license with that anyway, so forgive us for that, but, and that gives you a sense of the other services for Adventist Healthcare. So up Highway 29 before you get to the ICC behind Target off Cherry Hill Road. So what happens on our current campus after the move? Well, part of the certificate of need approval from the Maryland Healthcare Commission included a requirement that we provide urgent care services on the campus, and that these services would be provided seven days a week and 24 hours a day. So that will be provided on the campus. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Physician office, there's an existing physician office building on campus that will remain there for outpatient services. We will continue some clinical services in the hospital until the medical pavilion is ready in mid-2020. It could be April, May, June, that timeframe, radiation oncology, cardiac rehab, and some, as I mentioned, some non-clinical services as well. We have 42 inpatient rehabilitation beds currently within the existing hospital that will be moving over, but those rooms and that space is not ready and won't be ready until mid-2020. So we will have a rehab unit operating in the hospital. So effectively, we'll be continuing to run the hospital through the middle of next year. And we will have security services on the campus as well. The urgent care center will be in the existing emergency department. That'll be the location for the time being. So what happens to the campus? And I think ultimately, there's a lot of questions, hence some question marks. It will be repurposed. I think that's the one thing we know. There's uncertainty. I don't have a lot of specifics today. One thing, one of the question mark that, and my first bullet point, Washington Adventist University, my friends from Washington Adventist University, President Waymus Spence and Chief Financial Officer Patrick Farley are here tonight, but they released a press release that I'm sure most of you saw today, if not all, that the, just this morning, the Washington Adventist University Board of Trustees empowered them to make a offer to purchase our campus. And so that will be happening, and that will, that offer will be brought to the Adventist Healthcare Board down the road at the next board meeting. There is, you know, there's quite a bit of interest in the campus, as you can imagine. We've received one offer so far just to out and outsell. We could go forward as a development, as a partner, or develop it ourselves, or something else. So I'm not trying to be evasive, but there are still questions right now on the future of the campus. I would say what's not questioned is the interest in leaving something that honors the legacy and something that is accretive and positive and powerful for the community. So though there are questions remaining right now, my promise is we will continue the conversations we've had about our mutual interest in what happens on that site. A little bit more about the urgent care. So we're moving on Sunday, August 25th. The urgent care will open the next morning at 7:00 a.m. It's going to be in the former emergency department, as I mentioned, 24 hours a day, some days a week. It will have the benefit of onsite x-ray and laboratory, and of course, walk-ins are welcome for that. Part of what we will need your help on in communicating, not only is the hours and the location, but urgent care versus emergency department. Where do you go for what? And this is a graphic showing a little tutorial on what you want to do. Clearly, people should still call 911 if they have an emergency situation. And we do have a communication plan that we will be putting into practice to communicate with Tacoma Park and surrounding areas about this change, the hours, the services, and we would ask your help to utilize city channels as well for communicating information on the urgent care, so that as many people know about the move and know about the urgent care. We know we'll get folks showing up for the ED, and we will be ready to deal with that, but to the extent we can communicate and educate, that will be a great thing. So what happens on the 25th? At 7:00 a.m., the doors to the emergency department in White Oak will close, meaning that new patients won't be admitted. We'll have patients in the emergency department that will continue to be treated, and the doors to the emergency department in, I'm sorry, the doors at Washington Adventist Hospital here will close, and the doors at White Oak will open. And the 911, the ambulances will be rerouted, they are on board with that, and either people will go to Washington Adventist Hospital or the next closest hospital, depending on where they're located. We've been doing a lot of work on this transition. The number one goal for the day is patient safety. We've engaged with a great move team consultant who's been helping us for almost two years plan for this move. It is, it's quite a process, and we're taking it very seriously. And it includes a lot of training for the staff, it includes mock moves with ambulances and patients, we're not patients, but so that we can make sure on the day of the move, we can pull this off in a way that patient care isn't interrupted and patients aren't put at risk. On the day of the move, we will move everyone in one day. We anticipate we'll have somewhere around 100 patients to 120 patients who will need to be moved. We'll do what we can to discharge folks who are eligible to discharge. We'll cut back on elective cases the week before to try and skinny down the census as much as we can, but we know that we're going to have a significant amount of patients who will need to be moved that day. And they will start at 8:00 a.m., one by one. We haven't mapped out, we'll have a command center here in White Oak, or in Tacoma Park, and another in White Oak, and we will move a patient to an ambulance with a care team from Tacoma Park to White Oak, and it'll take us all day. But we will consummate that move in one calendar day. We have a contract with a private ambulance company to provide those services. We've been in touch and consultation with the county and the city about the move as well, and everyone has been very supportive of that. Just a little bit about the new campus. One of the benefits and one of the, you know, constraints is what works well in 1907 was the challenge, and for those of you who've tried to park in the last few years at our hospital know that it's tough. We're packed in there pretty tight. There's not a lot of room for outpatient services. Healthcare is evolving, and more work is being done on an outpatient basis, so this campus will afford us to provide that kind of care. Also, acute care hospitals, again, as we all know, are moving from semi-private rooms to historically, you would share a room or even a ward, way back with many patients, to now the care is provided in private rooms all across Maryland. So that is the, and we're going to have better access also to major roadways and public transportation, so we are excited about that. Again, it's bittersweet to be leaving, it's exciting to have a new facility, it's tough leaving a community in which you've been a big part of for so long. We are hopeful that folks from Tacoma Park who have chosen Washington Adventist Hospital to be their hospital will give us a chance and consider White Oak Medical Center their hospital as well. We have a community open house on Sunday, August 11th, where we are inviting the community to come and tour before we open up, and we'd love to have a big contingent from Tacoma Park come take a look. Mayor Stewart, that's the end of my presentation, and I'm sure there's some questions that I will attempt to answer.
Great. Well, thank you very much for being here. Any my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Wengsnus, thank you for being here with us this evening. As many know, Washington Adventist Hospital is in Ward 5, and, you know, it is a sad day that you are leaving Tacoma Park, a majority of the services at the hospital are leaving Tacoma Park. But we also need to recognize this achievement that you guys have accomplished. You have spent over $400 million on a new facility, probably the first hospital that was built in Montgomery County for the last 25 years, 30 years. I mean, that is something that, you know, we do need to recognize. I wish it was here, in Tacoma Park, but it is a big achievement. I would like to talk about the board review of the proposal from your sister organization, Washington Adventist University. When the board takes it up, at that time, will there be an actual vote on their proposal, or will it just be a review? And was it three months, six months, a year down the road, then there's a vote on the proposal? What are the actual procedural view of what's going to happen?
The offer will be reviewed, presented, and a vote will be taken.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, good.
When is that vote? When would that date be?
That would depend on when the offer's finalized and the next board meeting. I don't have that information. Our next, I'm not sure, but I can get you that date.
And when you said the offer needs to be finalized, is there a particular piece of the offer that the board would want to see before making that final decision?
The Adventist Healthcare Board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, and it's a complicated transaction, of course, with a lot of moving parts, and so those terms need to be ironed out and finalized.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fair. And at one time, we talked about the hospital raising the building once all of the services are no longer there. Is that still on the table?
I think the answer is it depends, or I'm not sure right now. I think ultimately, it's going to come down. It's a question of when. There's been, now there's, there's still energy out there to try and retain it, and so I'm not sure. I apologize, I don't know.
Okay, that's fair. You know, the rideshare companies are using this health initiative, and since, you know, we do, we'd like a lot of the Tacoma Park residents to, you know, still see their primary care physicians that are associated with the hospital. Have you guys contracted with Uber for their health initiatives so that they can, you know, patients can call Uber and it's, you know, billed through their doctor's office? Is that something that you guys have looked at?
We, not for primary care that I'm aware of, Jared. There's situations where, let's say, post-discharge, people get discharged from the hospital if they have problems with transportation. We want to make sure that they're getting access to their primary care, where we will arrange that for them. So sometimes there's an Uber or Lyft or a situation where, yeah, we step in and make sure they get to their, to their follow-up appointment. As we look at readmissions, people who come back in after being discharged, which is, that's not good.
Right.
And we want to try and figure out, how do we make sure when we discharge folks, they're not coming right back to us? So we're doing a lot of things, including trying to make sure, number one, they have an appointment, or they have a primary care physician in the first place. They have transportation, if they have drugs, pharmaceuticals on discharge. If they're eligible for social programs, we're working to introduce them to what that might be, whether it's Medicaid or food stamps and a litany of others, because it's other social determinants, as you know, other times than the pure issue that lands them in the hospital that determines whether they recover.
Right.
And get healthy or come back. So we're trying to, to the extent we can, fill some of that void.
Okay, good. And then finally, you guys have a kitchen and part of your food services in the basement of the building.
We do.
Yes. Have you thought about repurposing that? And if not, could we have some conversations about that? I think it would be an exciting, you know, repurposing that possibly could happen in the city.
We haven't specifically looked at the repurposing of the kitchen, and that doesn't mean it couldn't happen. Of course, if the hospital gets torn down, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't work out too well.
Right.
You wouldn't want to be there, but...
But in the meantime, you know, something could be, you could use it for some means, a food hall or something.
Yeah, potentially. You know, we run into issues with licensing, and I don't know. Oftentimes, it's more complicated than I understand, but, you know, I, we're open to having conversations about what might be possible for the campus, certainly.
Okay, great. And just want to say once again, thank you for being here, and it's incredible, I mean, what you guys have pulled off, so thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Councilwoman Cersei.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this great presentation, and I share Councilmember Smith's sentiments around, we're happy for the opportunities that you all are embarking upon. It's sad to see you go, and definitely wish that you could continue to be a part of the community.
Thank you.
So a couple of questions I have are really just about plain old logistics.
Okay.
So, and we talked a little, you shared quite a bit of information about the transfer of the patients and about that... and about that first phase that is set to start August the twenty-sixth, where patients have been moved out. Emergency room is closed, patients are redirected, and then the the urgent care is open. Now, where I'm a little more unclear is what happens after for Phase Two, where on slide, I'm sorry, they're not numbered. But after the twenty-sixth, where you still have the urgent care in addition to the physician offices that are still located there. I'm not sure what's happening with behavioral health. I don't know if that's set to retire or move mid-two thousand and twenty as well.
No, that'll move, we're hopeful that that moves the same day. We're planning to move behavioral health August twenty-fifth.
Okay.
But you have rehab patients for some time.
We do have rehab patients in the hospital on the fifth floor who will be there until around the middle of two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
So we'll be operating the campus, the power plant and security and securing the campus, you know, taking care of the campus, just as if the acute care hospital was there up through the move of the inpatient rehab.
Okay, so so it would be, in essence, status quo until mid-two thousand and twenty?
Well, status quo in that.
In terms of the overall appearance, access to parking, ability to kind of, basically, the overall function and feel of the space?
Parking's going to get much, much better.
Okay.
But but yes, it will. You know, will sections of the hospital that that aren't going to be utilized will be locked down? We don't want, you know, we want to make sure that it's that it's safe. And and so that's that is something that we're working hard to make sure that we get that locked down. So it's safe for our patients and our staff because there will be fewer people there.
Yeah, no, I totally agree that that's a priority. I'm also concerned about making sure that the overall feel of the campus doesn't come across as a bit of a ghost town, right? So if we are relocating quite a bit of services away, there may be not as much foot traffic and the like, and we have somewhat of a skeleton crew left behind, it it could give the overall feel of of it being a vacant space because it's it's quite large, it's a large building. So in terms of the overall, like signage and feel of the urgent care, when you ride around and you see urgent care units, usually there's signage that lets you know it's urgent care. It's directed. Are there going to be some changes to the overall space for the urgent care to accommodate the urgent care, changes to waiting rooms? All of what a typical Adventist urgent care looks and feels like? Is that what is expected to open come the twenty-sixth?
It'll look a lot like an emergency department, and I'm not trying to be a smart aleck. It's the day after we move out. And we'll be using less than the emergency department, the fast-track area. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but we have a what we call a fast-track where we're treating some of the lower acuity coughs, colds, you know, cuts, sprains versus the the higher acuity emergencies that go in in a different part of the emergency department. So we don't anticipate needing all of that space, but it's space that's ready for clinical use. It's space that is, from an IT standpoint, it's ready to go. It's space that has a registration area and a space that has a waiting area that is ready to accept those patients. I think is the is the campus developed, and we were talking a little bit about this with Dr. Spence. If the campus gets repurposed over time, if the the hospital gets torn down, what happens to that urgent care? It's going to need to evolve and go somewhere else on the campus, right? So it remains to be seen. My prediction is, and this is just a prediction, that it might be there for a year, and then it'll probably evolve to somewhere else on the campus. We will, we need to change, the day we move out is the day our hospital license for that location ends. So we will, we have a signage plan that so it's not going to say Washington Adventist Hospital. We don't want people to be confused about what services are there. But we will have signage for urgent care so that people understand what is there and where it's at.
And so it sounds like although we may not know what the form of the urgent care, like what it would look like, right? And there are, it sounds as if there aren't any immediate plans to make any improvements to the ED area as it currently exists in order to accommodate the urgent care. Is the is the goal to make sure that you all are able to continue to have urgent care services on the site? Or is that also up in the air depending on the development, whatever ultimately happens with the parcel?
The urgent care is a requirement of our certificate of need. So there, I I wouldn't say there's a goal around it. It it'll be provided on the campus. If it becomes clear with the repurposing that that's not the ideal spot for it, that becomes a different conversation. If if a better, higher use is for school or dormitories or housing or something else, then that's a conversation that we would would have with you and the Maryland Healthcare Commission.
And my last question is about some of the physician offices that are not in the main hospital, but the adjoining private.
Right.
Buildings. So has there been conversations with those physicians as well in terms of the your your move and the transition? Are you all working with them in terms of, you know, making sure that they're aware of what's happening on campus? And and having conversations with them about any potential moves they might be contemplating?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let me, I'll expound. I'm having fun, but of course, they're very interested in what's going on and as they should be. And we have been in contact with them for several years. They've been on sort of, we've all been on this conversation and journey together, the city, the community, the hospital, the physicians, our staff. So they've been aware and they know, you know, there's there's options to move to the new campus. Many are staying and and are looking forward to continue to serve the community. Many of them are primary care physicians that want to be in the community. So they necessarily, many of them use the hospital on a on a daily basis. They don't need to be close by to run back and forth for procedures. So they're very content to stay in Tacoma Park and serve their current patients. And frankly, they're excited about what the future, you know, not as one, I mean, there's different opinions, but many are, you know, curious and excited about what might happen on that campus in the future. But but to circle back to your question, they're they're very aware of what's going on, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Dibala.
Yes, I I think all of my questions were asked by Councilmember Cersei. I also had a number of practical questions. So I just want to say thank you for coming and thank you for serving the community for so long.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. I'll echo my thanks for serving the community as well as my sadness that you're leaving as well. I just had a couple of follow-up questions related to Councilmember Cersei's questions and one additional one. In regards to the signage, when the transition happens to an urgent care, I think to the average person, urgent care and emergency room are not necessarily concepts that they may or may not understand the difference of, difference between. So just as you're you're thinking about the signage for that, I hope you'll try to in some way communicate that this is not an emergency room, that this is more of sort of a walk-in, you know, you're sick, there's some, you know, urgent, but not in the sense of needing immediate, you know, life-saving capacity. Is that something that you're thinking about as you're working on the signage?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, if from the signage standpoint, that's a good question. I actually haven't seen what it's going to look like. It will say urgent care. What I do know is that people are, there's going to be confusion. And as hard as we try to communicate with the community, what changes are going to be made, we're going to miss folks. They won't know. We'll get people in two, three years, I'm sure, who who didn't realize the hospital wasn't there anymore. And it's it's going to take time. So we'll be ready to sort of triage, stabilize, and, you know, call for transfer on people who show up with emergencies. And, you know, we're going to do our best with that communication plan. And again, with that, we we need the help of the city and the channels that you have for communications to help educate people as well.
Okay. The other question I had was regarding employees. Do you expect most of the people who currently work at the hospital to move with you? Are you going to lose some? What is the general expectation in terms of what staff members will do?
We do expect everyone to move with us. There's going to be no reduction force as a that's contemplated as a kind of the impact of this move. There will be some people who choose not to, whether they might just not want to go. And I've heard some stories of that for whatever reason, and they might want to work closer to home. They might live in the neighborhoods and but it won't because jobs are eliminated.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kovar.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A few questions, others up here, I've already talked about it, but I just wanted to add to it a little bit. And you mentioned it, time may go by and people will not realize that the hospital is there. And particularly if someone's in an emergency situation, maybe not quite as much of an emergency or maybe just depending on the situation, they drive themselves or their family member or friend over there as opposed to calling nine-one-one. So they pull into the spot and then if where they think there is an emergency room and there isn't anymore. So what would happen in that situation if it's, say, a year from now or whatever, maybe after two thousand and twenty, when the other associated services aren't there either? What what would happen?
We currently operate three urgent care centers around the region, and this happens. And whether it's in those cases, it's not people coming expecting the hospital. It's coming and not really realizing how sick they might be. And we call nine-one-one. We call nine-one-one, get an ambulance and work to stabilize the patient until EMS gets there to transfer the patient to an acute care hospital. So that's what will happen in Tacoma Park starting August twenty-sixth.
I guess the only thing I would say is in the beginning transition period, if there would be something more than that, it might be worth thinking about because I really could imagine people, I think people know, you know, I've been to the one of these urgent care facilities on Georgia Avenue, for example, in Silver Spring, when I injured, you know, my knee or something, and that's a new place. And I knew that if I, you know, had been shot, I wasn't going to go there. Some people just won't know that, right? And so the the extra time of you guys having to call nine-one-one honestly just makes me a little nervous. So is there something that could be done even during the early time period when the transition, you know, is still really fresh? And people just may forget to to do more than that because that.
Sure.
Seems like that's going to take a while to to then have your staff call.
One of the challenges we face is that we're not licensed for an emergency department. You know, we don't have the ability to provide emergency department level of care.
I'm not really saying you should provide it. I'm just saying figure out some other way to transport people more quickly than having to wait for your staff to call nine-one-one, yeah. If you can think about that. We mentioned, several of my colleagues mentioned the adjoining land, so where the other doctor offices are who may stay there. So if that sale goes through, whether it's with the university or or some other entity, unless something else separate happens, that just remains as a separate parcel of land, is that right, where the the offices are?
It is. Back in, I think, nineteen eighty-two or three, when that was built, the footprint of that building was separated from the rest of the campus and sold to that what is now a condo building. So that's not part of the the campus and would not convey, let's say, in the case of Washington Adventist University, purchasing the property, that remains a distinct, separate piece of ground.
Okay, and that's a condo setting, basically, where various doctors are?
Yeah, that's right. They actually own their own units. An interesting way to to set up that building, but that was done back in the early eighties.
So just the last question, I don't know how much you can say about it since maybe it's new, but on the on the potential sale with the university, I mean, are they allies of yours since they're overall part of the same organization? Are you inclined to, you know, want to give them a hometown discount?
We are sponsored by the same denomination, and we both, that that land was purchased together in nineteen oh four. The school's been there since nineteen oh four. So I would say that, what what word did he use? Are we allies? Yes, we are allies, and we are supported by the same denomination. And.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have a few questions. First, I wanted to make a couple of statements about the fact that city staff have worked very closely with the transition team of the hospital. Our police department, communications teams have had quite a few discussions. We've got a lot more to go. We will be updating our website with the new information and the frequently asked questions, kinds of things that the hospital will be putting out. They'll have an article in the newsletter that will tell this information. We've talked about having information in different languages, particularly around the question of urgent care versus emergency care and how to choose. I am concerned about signage and appearance. I'm very concerned about security. We've had these discussions that when there's fewer people, there's, you know, potential for a lot more time spent by our police department on the site. So that's something that we are concerned about. But I, you know, we have been working very closely to be able to share this information. One of the things that, we have budget discussion coming up. Once you leave the campus, we're looking forward to the three hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue that will come from that campus, whether it's owned by the university for some revenue generating purpose or any other use. But, you know, the council has made its priorities for the use of the campus, if to the extent that they have his say, that education, particularly in new elementary school, is top priority, housing for the community and healthcare because we do value the primary care, particularly to remain in the community. And so that's something that, you know, we'll continue to advocate for and work with whomever is a partner to those ends. But I would think that you're looking in terms of having the rehab patients moving out and many of the administrative things move out mid-two thousand and twenty, isn't that correct?
Correct.
And so then I think at that point, then it becomes not a conditional use anymore. So it reverts to our sixty zoning, and it would need to go through the zoning processes and development review processes for any new use. We're willing to work with folks on how that gets dealt with. We are losing our largest employer, so we would love to have more employees back on site and using and being a benefit to our community. And so I just wanted to let people know that we have been preparing for this for very many years. I remember the date I got the call from Mayor Porter, the announcement of the hospital moving. And so we are looking for a new special asset to our community. So just want to make those comments.
Great, thank you. And I'll add my thanks for you coming this evening and your colleagues. So the first time I visited Washington Adventist Hospital was when I was in college because I was here visiting who were then going to be my in-laws and got ill. So that goes back a long time that I remember the hospital being here and having my family also, and most recently, my mother-in-law at the hospital. So it is a great loss for our community to lose all of you. And we do understand the needs of the hospital growing and congratulate you on the the White Oak Medical Center and wish you all the luck there. Just to underscore, I think, some of the points that were made regarding, you know, attractiveness of signs, wanting to get information out to residents. I'm glad we're having those conversations. And I guess the only question I would ask as a follow-up, I think, to some of the questions Councilmember Smith asked and follows on what Ms. Ludlow just laid out, is, do you know, is there a timeline for thinking about what does happen on the campus that you all have been kind of playing around? have been kind of playing around with, or?
I think, and I apologize in how non-specific this is, there isn't a definitive timeline. You know, we have a timeline for, we know we're going to need to run the hospital for about another year, and I think as we go through, even the end of this year, we'll have greater clarity on the future of that campus, whether it's the ownership and the needs and how we might work to develop that. But right now, there's no definitive timetable on it, Mayor.
Great. Well, thank you again, and I'm sure we will be talking a great deal over the next couple of weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Now, we will move on to our public comments on voting items. We have a number of voting items this evening. Our first is our first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 tax rate. Are there any public comments on that voting item?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Mariel, and I'm here representing Community Vision. I support the two proposals that were presented in a meeting last Friday night, organized by Community Vision, at which David Navari, who you all know, has presented. And those two recommendations are start tracking personnel's time on task on the first day of the fiscal year, July 1, 2019, to provide us with real transparency so we can see where our tax dollars are going. As you know, the city budget has approximately, 80% of the city budget is for personnel costs. We do not track time on, in the city budget. This is a complete lack of fiscal responsibility and transparency, and it's critical to good governance that this tracking take place immediately with the start of the new fiscal year. Additionally, we need to hold tax increases to no more than the rate of inflation, because working-class people, seniors on fixed incomes, and parents of special needs adults, as well as anyone living on a modest level of income, are being forced to move from Tacoma Park due to rising property taxes and further increases that are not sustainable. Transparency is a critical term, and it's critical to budgeting and to understanding where our tax money is going. It's critical to being able to manage a budget, is to understand how much services, projects, and programs cost. It's mind-boggling to me why you, the city council, would vote yes on the proposed budget and not include adoption of budget transparency through activity-based tracking. I cannot understand how you, the city council, would justify not knowing how nearly all of the city's tax revenue and budget are spent. This is the current city's approach, not knowing. How can you, city council, justify not knowing the full cost of our programs? How can you, city council, vote on a tax rate that is not sustainable and that pushes out people because they no longer can afford Tacoma taxes? Tacoma taxes, at the current rate of growth, are creating a gated community, and you, city council, are the gatekeepers. We need to learn to live within our means and to be transparent about our expenses by tracking them. And I also want to comment that the racial equity consideration is misguided.
Thank you.
David Navari, Sycamore Avenue. So, yes, Friday, we had the opportunity to have a community conversation, and I wanted to thank the mayor and Casey and the city manager for coming. That was really great. So the approach was pretty simple, just presenting the data, and I think it was an eye-opener for a lot of people, that the city has a median income of $85,000, meaning half the households make less than $85,000 a year. So we're kind of, pretty much, a working-class community. There's the, you know, some outliers, but this historical, community's been historically working-class. And as we said, it's great that we provide assistance for the people at the bottom, but there's a giant chunk of people in the middle that don't qualify for assistance. So, yeah, the focus was what's a sustainable growth rate, and I know you guys have been talking about that, and there's the introduction of the ECI as an external metric. But the reality is that most people are stuck with incomes that are barely growing at inflation, some not keeping up with inflation. And I just, I think what would be helpful is, and this is a specific request to the politicians, is to at least acknowledge it. You could say, now, we disagree, your facts and your premise is flawed, which would be fine, and then we can debate that. Or we could say, yeah, we agree with you, but too bad, so sad, we have a different agenda that's more important. And that would actually be fine, too. I've told people that they're correct, but my agenda's different than theirs. So that's fine. But I think just the, the not, the lack of recognition that this is an issue, I think, is creating frustration that we really don't need, and I think you saw that when our city manager stood up and did not at least address the issues that were discussed. So that would be my request, as you engage with the community and people are talking about this, you know, at least either refute it, or agree with it, or disagree with it, but just to kind of have the blank stare and not acknowledge that this is a real issue for people. That's, I think, what creates frustration, and then frustration leads to, I don't know, unproductive communication approaches. So that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on our first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 tax rates?
Colleen Cordis, Ward 1. First, I want to apologize for some incorrect information I sent you in an email about there not being fiscal '19 spending figures in that 31-page document that was prepared, because I, you know, I did go through and I did see those, but looking at it again, I see that you have totals for different fiscal years. However, it's still true, it's impossible to tell what is rising at the rate of inflation or the rate, the 2.6% above constant yield rate, let's say that you've chosen the ECI, what is not rising, you know, what's gaining more than that? So that's a matter of transparency. The other thing is this issue of having tied the 2.6% to the constant yield rate that the state identified, which in your own statistics and data, you can see was too high. And so you're using a too-high constant yield rate. If you look at what you're actually expecting to raise in property tax revenue for fiscal '19, it's in there on page 13, under general revenue, it's, the rate that it's right, that tax revenue will rise in fiscal '20 under your budget will rise something like 3.76%. And that's because the state estimated that tax revenue in fiscal '19 would be higher than it actually is. So that made, that meant the state estimated that your constant yield rate would be higher than it really is. So then you connected the ECI to the constant yield rate that the state identified, but it was too high. And so that's why you're actually, you're, the rate at which the budget you're going to vote on tonight would rise more than what you think it will, because you're using the state's too-high projection of both tax revenues for '19 and therefore what the constant yield rate would be. I'm not an expert on this, but, and the numbers I put in, you know, might be a little off, but certainly, I did speak to Jason today, the Assistant City Manager, and to the Finance Director, and I think they both understand what I'm talking about and probably could confirm what I'm saying. The other thing is, very quickly, I am very concerned about people being priced out, and it isn't just people who are already here, it's people who can't move here. And my councilmember, Peter Kovar, had an email today saying that we want to keep housing affordable. We have not kept housing affordable. It is not now affordable. And I'd like to repeat, based on like what David was saying, let's recognize that housing is no longer affordable. We are risking losing our diverse, inclusive community, and it's an emergency. Taxes are a part of it, an important part of it, but they're not the only part, and we really need action.
Thank you, Ms. Cordis.
Thank you.
Reno Aldrigetti, 7213 Central Avenue. So I'm a person who believes that good product emerges from good process. So we sat here at the beginning of this evening, watching you have an interactive conversation with the hospital, important conversation. Now you're entering into an important conversation with the community. But I never see a back-and-forth. I see we get two minutes, three minutes, whatever the hell you deign to give us, and then you shut down the conversation, and there is never a question to the community, as we saw you have with the college today. And I would just ask you to think about that a little bit, and the fact that you didn't ask any of us if we had any questions for that college, many of us who have worked with that college for many, many years. So let me just quickly, quickly say one thing, one other thing about the budget. Now, actually, about two decades, two or three decades ago, I remember going to City Hall and asking for the number of citizens by decade and the number of employees by decade. And what we found was, at the time, was that there just were very little in the way of increases of population, except when we brought in some new territory and we gained 2,000 or 3,000 folks. But on the other hand, our staff continued to grow gradually. Now, there may be great need for that, to have much greater service for a static population. But I do think that that time, when we looked at it, the only, over a couple of decades, the only position that was eliminated was the dog catcher. And I wonder, you know, I wonder, I remember Jimmy Carter, years ago, did zero-based budgeting, didn't mean you shut down the staffing and so on, it's that you justified what people did. And it seems to me that as the population remains static and as the staffing continues to grow, the question of having some kind of justification for that is important, particularly as, as has been said, the costs, the costs of living in Tacoma Park continue to go up, and indeed, many people are moving because of that. And we've seen that happen over many years, not just now, but it ought to be addressed. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on the FY 2020 tax rate? Any public, so our next voting items are our first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 storm management budget. Any public comments on the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 budget? All right. And then our last voting item this evening is a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a video security system. Any public comments on that? All right. Seeing none, then we will move into our voting session, and the first one is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2020 tax rate. Was there additional information the city manager had for us tonight?
Yes. One of the things that we talked a lot about over the course of the year was providing the opportunity for the council to have tax rates on differing categories of property. And although we did not distinguish in the discussions, we are identifying those different categories in the ordinance. So we have on the ordinance, under real property, the rate for apartments, for commercial property, for residential property, for vacant property, and then the continuing personal property and railroad and public utilities rates. The rates for real property, for apartments, commercial, residential, and vacant are all to be set, if you approve this ordinance, at $53.97 per, 53, I always have this wrong, $53.97 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. I would note that it is something that we should be addressing to change the code, to put these categories in the code, and identify a better way of having this reflected in the actual code language. So that's something to take up during the course of the year, but particularly because there's no difference among the various rates, it should not make a difference for us at this time. The other thing, let's see, so that's all for the tax rate, I think.
Great. So first, we vote, just so everyone's clear what we're doing, first, we vote on the tax rate, then we convene as the Stormwater Management Board, vote on the Stormwater Management Budget, and then vote on the budget overall.
Actually, I do have, I do have an additional comment. Ms. Cordis did raise one point, and so we did correct the information on the cover sheet, kind of supplemental information, to have the, a sentence changed to read, "The adopted tax rate is higher than the constant yield tax rate by 1.37 cents. The adopted tax rate for FY 2020 will result in an increase in property tax revenues in the amount of $476,154 over FY 2019, which is an increase of 3.76%." And it's a discussion for another night, I think, but it does come from the change that the state does in its assessable base information as credits are taken into account and assessment appeals are taken into account. So that changes the constant yield number kind of calculation, and it's one of the reasons that it's confusing. So I'm happy to go through that at some point, but I think that this sentence helps clarify the difference between the FY '19 number and the FY '20 number.
Anyone have any questions on that? Councilmember Kovar?
Yes, thank you for that and for the correction and to, I don't know if Colleen Cordis is still here for catching that. So it is somewhat clearer, but I still had a question, so, and I appreciate you doing the clarification. So part of the difficulty in getting these numbers as specific, it sounds like you're saying, is because despite, it's not a constant yield, isn't a constant thing, and then it evolves a little bit because people appeal, new unanticipated properties come online or houses are sold or whatever, and that makes the thing adjust one way or the other.
That's right.
But in terms of the actual amount, rather than the percentage, what we're looking at in terms of the expenditures in the budget with this tax rate is a little more than constant yield plus ECI. Is that an accurate statement?
No, it's, no, it's, it's a, the actual difference between the FY 2019 expected revenue versus the FY '20 expected revenue is that, is that $476,000, which is a 3.76% difference. But that's, that's a different kind of a calculation than council, than constant yield plus ECI, and that's because the constant yield does change. So you can look at it in either way, but the, and the number can go up or down each year based on, you know, we've had, one of the years, it went up quite a bit because people prepaid their tax revenue to get the income tax benefit. So it's not something that we can anticipate, we, and we're required to refer to the constant yield, that the State Department of Assessment and Taxation sends to us in February of each year. So it's a discussion point, I think it's...
But using that number, then it is only 2.6%. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Would someone like to move the first reading ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2020 tax rate?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Seer C. seconds. Any discussion on this before I call the vote? Councilwoman Kostick?
Yes. I just had a couple of general sort of comments and thoughts. I appreciate the comments that were made today, the public comments, as well as the comments I heard on Friday at the Community Vision event. I want to thank Community Vision for organizing that. I want to thank Community Vision for organizing that, and also David for all of your work analyzing the budget and presenting and taking a close look at this and working with us over the past year, as well as continuing to work with us on ways to make the budget better. And I think for me, throughout all of this, the discussion we had on Friday night, I put out a survey to residents regarding the budget and got a lot of great feedback from them. One of the things that strikes me that we need is really just an ongoing conversation about the budget. I don't think this can be something that we just do, you know, for one month out of the year. I think it has to be something we're thinking about regularly and we're infusing all of our work with, throughout the year. So when we're talking about doing a new initiative, or we're talking about, you know, voting on an ordinance related to replacing some piece of equipment, I think those are key points when we should sort of touch base again with the budget and touch base with residents about what they support and their tax rate, and tying those things together so that it's not just sort of this, oh yeah, let's do this, but it is really pinpointing that everything that we're doing has a cost associated with it, and that we're using public funds and all of our own private money to fund these things. So I really appreciate all the comments that have come out, and I hope that we can continue to have that conversation. And this isn't something that, you know, we just, we had, we voted on the budget and then it's over. I think this needs to be an ongoing conversation. And I also, there have also been a few things that have been identified throughout the process that we've discussed as a council and I've discussed with the city manager that I think would be useful for us to have work sessions on as well. As a follow-up, I know we talked a little bit about the rec department and some of the rec department programs, the general issue of affordability and what tax rate we want to be aiming for, as well as these questions that you were just discussing regarding, you know, how we calculate what that is and, you know, being confident that we understand those numbers and we can set a goal that we really understand and can work towards. And then, you know, another thing I just noticed and had a brief chat with the city manager about was the rates also for personal property and for railroad and public utilities, which was, is not really a part of our budget discussion, that I think would be useful to delve into a little more and discuss further. So, and I think also a part of that can be discussing the idea of tracking time on task and how we find out information about how personnel are spending their time and what our money is being used for, which I think we have a lot of information about right now. But there may be different and innovative ways that we can really drill down into that a little more. So I just want to thank everyone for their input and their feedback throughout this process. And also thank the city manager and the deputy city manager and finance director and staff members for all their work throughout this budget season and answering our many, many questions. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Dabala.
Yes, thank you to the staff for all the work on the budget. And thank you to the residents who commented on the budget. I also had some general comments, and I swear that Councilmember Kostic and I did not rehearse this ahead of time, although it's going to sound a lot alike. I have heard from a number of residents and more too about the challenges of aging in place, about the challenges of rising costs in general. And I agree with something that somebody said earlier. It's working on the budget, it's also looking at housing issues, it's looking at other charges, county tax rate, other sources, looking at other sources of revenue. And I agree with Councilmember Kostic that this is a conversation that is ongoing and is not just, oh, this is budget season, so we're going to move a few numbers up and down. And I want to, and this is why I asked for a couple of work sessions on personnel costs, on possible tax credits, et cetera, to get at some of these outside of the pressure of the first, the few weeks of the budget season. So I have heard what people say. I don't agree with everything people have commented on, but I would really like to continue the conversation. I did at the beginning of this cycle think that constant yield plus ECI is a good target, at least for this year, and I think that we've achieved that. Even if not everybody voted formally to do it. So I'd like, I'd like to continue the conversation about whether and when that would be a target we would set, you know, in the future for other budget cycles. So I think I'll stop while I'm ahead here, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
First, I'd like to thank the staff for their work on the budget. You know, each year it gets better and that there's more information provided to council members. But we do need to work on how do we translate that information to residents outside of just the budget period, the time that we have to submit our tax rate to the state. I want to thank David for all his hard work on this. I have paid attention to your emails. I want to thank Colleen for your email today, that was really informative. I didn't think about that, but thank you. I want to agree with my colleagues that we need to have this conversation, we need to broaden the conversation and have it more than just one month out of the year. I don't know if the ECI is the best inflation metric that we use. I would rather use the COLA that Arthur David Olson had mentioned at one of his public comments. I think that is something that we could really justify. I'm going to read a comment that a resident sent that really informs my thinking about the budget. And this is from Vivian Fields. She's retired, she lives at 411 Circle Avenue. And she says, "I am writing about our tax increase. I am a senior with only social security income. I receive food stamps and food from Manah. A tax increase is a great burden for me because I don't get much of an income increase. And when I get an income increase, it is taken up by an increase in Medicare and supplement income. Other bills increase as well. Granted, I get tax credits, but still, an increase is a burden. My income is only $1,800 a month below the poverty level. Thank you for allowing my voice to be heard." I think that is what is representative of many people that live in this city. Many people have retired from the federal government, and they just cannot absorb these increases like those people that have a job. So I think we need to be cognizant of that. And we, when we pick these metrics, we have to understand how are people going to pay for it if you are no longer working and you're on a fixed income? So I don't know if I would have voted for this budget if my colleague had not proposed the tax credit, because I think that will help some people. But this is a big issue if it is important to the council for people to retire in place in this community. Because if that is not something that we want to do, this is something that David mentioned earlier, then we need to say that. But if we really want people to live here in this community once they have retired, then we have to provide them the means to do it, or at least help them with the means to do it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Seersey.
Thank you so much, city manager, deputy city manager, and finance director, for all of the hard work that you all have put in. I know we've been sending you tons of questions and emails. Sometimes I don't even have to send an email. I just sit back, and between what David sends and Colleen and everyone else, I get the full rundown of what's happening. And so I appreciate all of the feedback that everyone has provided and all of the comments and thoughtfulness behind residents' engagement around the budget. For me, part of the challenge is anticipating what may happen in the future. I agree with all of the points raised, that we have a number of residents in our community currently who are on fixed incomes and cannot sustain living in a city where the only primary source of tax revenue is property taxes. You know, that's just not sustainable. So for me, one of my priorities was making sure, even in the last cycle, you know, let's make sure that we're hiring the economic development manager. Let's make sure that we're trying to prioritize programs this cycle that will help to create more, you know, viable commercial districts within the city. Let's really start thinking differently about commercial development in the city of Tacoma Park. If we do, we can alleviate a lot of the tax burden that homeowners are facing right now. And I know it's a double-edged sword. It's something like, I don't want people to feel like they have to dance with the commercial devil in order to, in order to deal with some of the financial challenges that we have. But given what's happening in the country, given the aging population, the aging population as well as our aging housing stock, we have to think of things differently. And so although I would have ideally preferred that we were able to stay flat with our budget this cycle, I'm happy with where we are in terms of the constant yield and ECI. But I'm also happy in terms of where we are prioritizing resources. I'm happy to see resources devoted to community engagement around what the rec center development could potentially be. I'm happy to see that we are trying to, in a minimal way, also work on things like commercial facade and things like that. Because again, our commercial districts look better, they get assessed at higher rates, we get more money, you know? And that doesn't come from homeowners. So, you know, again, it's not an ideal situation, it's not, you know, a preferred approach. But one thing that this budget cycle has really helped me to understand is the need to do something different. And I agree with my colleagues in terms of trying to think about the budget year-round and thinking about, we have these financial statements in our, but we really need to start thinking about the financial implications of what we're doing throughout the year and how they may ultimately have long-term and lasting impacts on the overall budget. And that might actually shape some of our decisions going forward. So again, I thank you all for all of the feedback that you've provided. Definitely hope that we can continue to have a conversation and definitely am in support of the current rate that's in the budget.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start out by thanking the city manager and staff for the vast amount of work that went into preparing the proposed budget and then the many more hours of work that you all put in to answer questions and fill in some of the data requests that the council has provided. It really, I know, has been a burden over and above the normal day-to-day work, but appreciate that effort. I also, this year, really want to thank the community for the interest and the feedback and the participation in this process. I think it's been stronger this year than I've seen in many years in the past. Arthur David Olson, I appreciate your being here every week, every meeting, and for the, kind of the finer points that you bring out that, you know, again, supplement the information we get from the city staff and really help us to think some of these things through. I also wanted to thank Cynthia Mariel for being here. I wanted to apologize for not being able to make the meeting on Friday. But I appreciate your being here and advocating for some of the lower-income residents here in the city. And David Navari, I wanted to thank you not just for being here at the council meetings, but also for meeting with us individually and presenting some of your ideas and thoughts on the budget, the whole budget process. As I told you when we met individually, that I support better tracking of employee and staff hours by projects that are worked on. You know, we, it wasn't a closed deal for the whole council, but it's something I think we can continue to work on and see how maybe we can have a modified version of that in the future year. And then I would especially like to thank my colleagues on the council, because I think this was, you know, I've been here, as people point out, and I've been here, been here for a while. But this, I think, was one of the best budget processes that I've seen the council do during my years here on the council. I appreciate the fact that we really have embraced the idea of setting priorities and not just setting priorities for staff work and for our work on what we want to do, but actually implementing that into the budget. And I think this is the first year where I've seen that as strong as what it is this year. And I think, I want to say that I also appreciate my colleagues giving me the feeling that they're really listening to the community and the community needs, and for caring about the population and not just trying to get the budget through and convince people this is good, but trying to think, how do we protect the community members so that we do keep the economic diversity in this community that has really made it a special place to live? So I'll end it with that, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. And I appreciate, as several of my colleagues mentioned, all the work of the staff and certainly hearing from the community, I was struck by the comment about dancing with the commercial devil. Just wondering, maybe there's a nonprofit devil out there somewhere too, and what that would mean. I usually say in advance in the material that I send around how I'm voting. And I didn't this week, frankly, because I'm a little bit conflicted about it. And I think it's kind of a close call. After thinking about everything and hearing from the residents and talking to my colleagues, I decided I'm voting no on this package tonight. I'm voting for the stormwater fee, but no on the other two things, the budget and the taxes. I don't think it's a massive difference, though, and I just want to talk a little bit about why I'm deciding to do that. I think it's generally a good budget. There's a lot of things in there that I consider to be very important. We're not cutting back on crucial services and programs and initiatives that I think are especially important to people in the community, including those with low and moderate income. But I think it's a tough tax year. We've had some very uneven reassessments, and I'm hoping we might even have an opportunity to ask questions of the state, relevant state office about that. But there's also the change at the federal level. And I think it's true that if you look at the average amount that people will be affected by this increase, it's not a huge amount, but, you know, people don't just pay an average, they pay an amount. And I think whether it's, whether you use the $333,000 or the $476,000, when you factor in everything and think about the number of homeowner households we have in the city as opposed to renter households, the ones who are going to be affected by that and figure that 80% or so of the property taxes is paid by residential folks, you know, the average effect of a tax increase of this range on a household is, you know, centered a little bit around $100 one way or another, depending on which of the two figures we use. So that's not a huge amount, so you might say, why, you know, what's the big deal? And I think it has to do with the budget process. And several people up here, my colleagues, talked about, you know, the need for looking at and coming up with some alternative ways of thinking about the budget. We kind of ended up, again, depending on how you calculate it, we kind of ended up at constant yield plus. at, um, constant yield plus an inflation adjustment, and, and I think, um, Mr. Navari and others have made, uh, good arguments in favor of that approach. And although I couldn't make the meeting, I, I do want to assure you, I, I watched the whole presentation, so, uh, just for what that's worth. But I don't think we had sat down and really thought through and discussed among ourselves that that was what we were going to do this year. We've kind of ended up there, but maybe we have, depending on how you calculate. And so I would just feel better, and I think the mayor's talked about it and they really appreciate it and others have as well, if we had a few sessions really devoted to looking at how these different, um, um, ways of thinking about the budget might work so that, again, next year, we're not scrambling at the last minute. Um, I do want to say, you know, there's not a, there's not a silver bullet for reducing, um, um, spending. There were some things that I wanted to cut and, and I was outvoted and that's, that's the way that goes. But I think during the time I've been here, you know, the, the tax rate's gone down all three years until this year. Now, I understand that that may not be the same as, uh, getting down to constant yield plus, um, an inflation adjustment. I think only five or six new FTEs have been added on a net basis, again, during the time I've been here. And my impression is the staff work really hard, there isn't a lot of waste and, you know, people ask about personnel and it is a big share of what we do, but we're competing with the whole region. It's not just our little area and a perfect example of that is our HR director was just announced is taking a job in Howard County. Our previous, uh, uh, city manag-, city manager went down to DC, you know? We have to compete, we have to look at it in that, in that broader way. It's not just, it's not just a very local kind of thing. I agree with those who suggested that, that we ought to take a look at the, um, better record-keeping. I don't think that's a, a panacea for everything and I, I'd be willing to try maybe on a pilot basis how that would work, but I'm also not somebody who thinks that return on an investment that works in the private sector. I don't think that should be our goal in government. The goal in government is to serve people and yes, it's, it's important to know what the expenditures are, but I wouldn't evaluate a program based on the, the cost in terms of the time that people, uh, spent on it if the value of it in terms of services, especially to lower income people, was valuable. So I think all those things are worth looking at, but I don't, again, I don't think it's a panacea or, or a silver bullet for that. And, you know, when you think about things like police, uh, I, no one's come up to me and said they want fewer patrols and I can tell you, there was a recent incident, I think I talked about it, where the police came out to Hodges Lane, there had been a lot of break-ins there and they had a, um, an undercover operation at two in the morning to catch, uh, one of the perpetrators. It doesn't stop all these crimes completely, but that was very helpful and we're not going to get that with the county, in my opinion. Um, and I think in terms of the Recreation Department, we want to do more, we're trying to do more with New Hampshire Avenue. So I think modest adjustments can be made. I don't think there's going to be some sort of massive, um, reconsideration and, um, I don't want to extend this any longer, but those are some of the factors that, that I've taken into account and making a decision. I think it's, uh, uh, like I said, a close call, but I come down the side of wishing that it could have been a little bit lower. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just say a few words. Um, the first one is thank you to Councilmember Smith for, uh, reading the note that we all received. And we received a, a few others similar to that and I would just ask the, um, city clerk who has those emails, if you could make sure the person who, um, Councilmember Smith read, um, seems aware of the tax credit programs, but I know lots of times people are not aware of all the programs that are available and the fact that the city also matches and, and also our emergency fund. So if we could just make sure and reply to each of the residents who did email us in about that, that information I think is really important. I always think of, um, Ms. Machui, who didn't actually come tonight, um, but who for many years didn't know about our programs and now does. Um, the second thing is, um, I think it was Councilwoman Circe, you talked about the fact that like, the fact that we have to rely on the property tax for our revenue is, is kind of messed up, right? It is. Um, you know, this has been a problem for municipalities, um, for a really long time. And while their, you know, la-, larger municipalities across the country have lobbied their states so that they can levy their own income taxes or raise revenues other ways is very common. Um, unfortunately, in the state of Maryland, in Montgomery County, this is what we, this is our reality right now. Um, and so we do have great needs in our community. Um, and we know that there are many residents who are aging and want to age in place. And how do we make sure that we have a community that's affordable, that they have housing that's affordable, that they can stay there? Um, and so working in terms of thinking about how do we, um, have revenue to actually provide services and do all those things is, um, what we grapple with every year. Uh, and I agree with my colleagues, um, we tried to do this a little bit when we set our priorities in January and I think moving forward, we can, um, think of better ways to do this. Um, the third thing is, is that, um, as a reminder, the last two years, I actually voted against the tax rate. I voted for our budgets, but I voted against the tax rate and each of those years, I said the reason I did that is because I didn't think we had a good measure that we were using, an objective measure, um, by which we were working towards for our budget. Um, and Councilmember Siemens said it, I think we're getting there. I think looking at constant yield plus ECI this year, um, is a good place, a good objective measure to look at. Um, but I agree that we can look at whether or not this is the appropriate one. You know, just to throw out some numbers, it, the inflation rate is 1.9%. COLA is 2.8%. ECI is 2.6. So, you know, which actually is the best measure for us that will, um, really make sure that we have our, setting our tax rate appropriately. I think this year I feel secure to do constant yield plus ECI, but as we get into this, you know, maybe it is COLA, maybe it is inflation. Um, we can look at that more moving forward, but I, sitting where I am and sitting on this council, I feel like thanks to the work of, um, residents and asking questions, we have really moved the ball, um, a great deal and thanks to the work of our city staff. Um, and I think, you know, just to acknowledge that every time we ask a question, um, it sometimes raises two or three other questions and we need to be constantly, um, disaggregating the data we have. Um, in particular, I think Mr. Navari very much for, you know, talking about the, um, median income in our community. Well, in fact, if you break that down by renters and householders, we'll find that the median income for renters is about $85,000 in our community, but for homeowners, it's 141,000, the median income. So there's a difference median income for homeowners versus renters. Doesn't mean that 85 is wrong, it's just that, that's more information now we now have that we wouldn't have had if the question wasn't even, the point wasn't raised before. And so it's just to say that I think, um, we, it's a process of ever improving our budget and, um, I'm really happy with the work that we did this year, thanks to working in partnership with the city staff and the residents. And I look forward to, uh, voting in favor for this, this year. So with that, all those in favor of adopting the FY 2020 tax rate, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Any abstaining? All right. Now I'd like to vote to convene as the Stormwater Management Board. Would someone like to move that vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith moved, Councilmember Dabala second. All those in favor of convening as the Stormwater Management Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, then we'll do our first reading ordinance, adopting the FY 2020 Storm Management, bah, Stormwater Management Budget. The city manager, want to give a little recap on that one?
It's a thrilling recap. We're keeping the same rate that we have had. However, we do have a very strong list of projects, uh, in the upcoming year, one of which is the, I hope, a decision on recalculation of the stormwater fee that better allows people who have less impervious surface to pay less than they currently do and those that pay, have more, pay more. It's, I think, a much more fair way than the county has its little, you get a, a bit of money if you put in some, um, you know, a rain garden and, and use a, a rain barrel. Um, it's a way that you would have an ongoing lower rate if you have less impervious surface on your property. And it's particularly helpful for those that have smaller properties, which also tends to be, um, similar to kind of a racial breakdown also with our community. So I think there's a lot of benefits to that. Looking forward to having that as a project before you this year.
That's it. Terrific. Would someone like to move the FY 2020 Stormma-, Water Management Budget?
Move.
Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Smith, second. Any conversation?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make one point, um, that both the Stormwater Management Fund and the Special Revenue Fund, um, don't exactly, and why would they, right, exactly balance down to the penny? And so, uh, I had asked the question about, um, which came from a resident, about what that quote gap is. And as I understand it, it's the, it's both of these funds, like the general fund, run a, an unassigned fund balance.
There's a, there's a balance, there's a fund balance.
Fund balance from the funds that aren't used this year, that can be used next year, that kind of thing.
That's right.
So I just wanted to, to put that down as a point for people who might wonder why they don't add up exactly.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the FY 2020 Stormwater Management Budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Um, next is our first reading ordinance, adopting the FY 2020 Budget, and I think we had a change to this that we were going to propose.
Yes, so again, in, in your salmon covered, um, she, we, um, have on the budget ordinance, um, Councilmember, Councilmember Kostic and Councilmember, uh, Kovar made a couple, uh, comments related to the 17% goal of a fu-, of a, um, unassigned reserve in the general fund. And so what we have, uh, we had had one paragraph, one whereas clause, um, that said, well, if, I'd like to read a couple of these clauses. It said, "It's the policy of the city council to set the level of the general fund, unassigned fund reserve at 17% of the general fund revenue, which would be equivalent to 4.3 million." And just as a note, the 4.3 is accurate because there was a change in the general fund revenue as part of the reconciliation. So in, under the previous number, it would have been 4.4, but it's 4.3 million. And whereas in the FY 2020 Budget, the general fund unassigned reserve is projected to be 3.1 million. However, that level is determined to be acceptable due to the inclusion in the budget of the restricted bond reserve of 5.9 million dollars. And then there's two more additional, um, whereas clauses that I kind of put together from comments from council. Whereas the city council maintains its commitment to a general fund, unassigned fund balance of 17% of the general fund revenue. As identified in Resolution 201824, the council recognizes that this may require a phase-in period to help mitigate impacts on the local property, tax rate, and/or city programs and initiatives. And whereas the council will continue to work toward reaching a level of 17% in future budgets with a goal of doing so within a three-year period from the point at which the balance falls below the minimum. And that was language that was taken largely from the resolution that you had passed earlier.
Councilmember Kovar, do you?
I do want to ask you. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. So as I understand it, for the past year, the year we're just finishing up now, it was 2.6.
Yes.
Or so. This raises it up to 3.1.
That's right.
So if we had two more tranches, if that's the word, of say, five or $600,000 each year, assuming that the budget overall may continue to grow, but in that order of magnitude, we'd get close to that four-point whatever that we're striving to, right? So we'd have to do this another, a, a similar boost or a bit more the next couple of years to get there. Does that seem right to you? And to do it in three years?
That would, that would be the case if there weren't the restricted bond reserve, but because there's a restricted bond reserve and we're already pulling down on it for the Ethan Allen Project, the Flower Avenue Project and the Library Project, that actually we will move it faster.
Okay.
So, um, I thi-, that's a, that's one of the things that's really good. What we're doing is making sure that we have a pot of money set over here so that we don't accidentally spend it on programs when it needs to be spent on those projects.
But in other words, again, without predicting, you know, whether, uh, you know, uh, a meteor falls on us or something, do, getting to that 17% level over a
I believe it's
three-ish year period seems doable, if you count this as the first year, this coming year as the first year.
I actually think that even next year, it should be doable.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Great. Would someone like to, um, sorry, I just lost my sheet of paper. Um, move the first reading ordinance of adopting the FY 2020 Budget?
Move.
Councilmember Siemens moved, Councilwoman Circe, second. Any comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of the FY 2020 Budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One opposed? All right. Any abstain-, all right. Sorry. Any abstaining? All right. And then the budget first reading passes. Um, the next is we have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a video security system. Uh, would someone like to move that, please?
So moved.
Councilmember Smith moved, do I have a second?
Okay.
Councilwoman Circe, do, any comments or questions? Okay, it's a single reading ordinance, so the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dabala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, now we'll move to any other, wow, we're right on time too, 15. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, seeing that we cleared the room except for, then we'll move to, uh, council comments. Councilwoman Dabala.
Uh, I think that, that's just on, I don't have anything to say.
Oh, yeah, all right. Councilwoman Circe.
Uh, Spring Fest on, um, Saturday. So come out, we'll be on Ann Street. Um, I'm just trying to make sure, because right now my brain is fried, that I have the right dates, but yes, it is on Saturday from...
Just sorry, I didn't know what I was going to say either.
Um, why do I keep forgetting when it is? But it is Saturday, um...
Have it marked 1 o'clock.
1 o'clock.
That's right.
Thank you. That's right. But it is the Saturday on Ann Street at 1:00. So come one, come all. That's all I got.
Great. Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. I have a number of things I will try to go through relatively quickly. Um, first of all, I want to, um, recognize Public Service Recognition Week and thank all of our staff as well as the residents who work, um, at city, county, state and federal levels for all of your service. A couple of notes from this past weekend, um, Councilmember Circe and I took part in, um, a Maryland Municipal League and National League of Cities, uh, Young Municipal Leaders Summit. It was a great opportunity to, um, meet other, um, elected officials and staff members from other parts of Maryland and have some great discussions about ways to, um, further engage millennials and Gen Xers in the community, as well as, we talked a lot about generational empathy, which was a new sort of buzzword to me, um, but I think was, it was really an interesting opportunity to sort of look at generational differences and, um, think about the different experiences of different generations. So it wa-, it was a great event. Um, we also, um, staff member from the Recreation Department, Lisha, um, Manafort, also participated as well and it was, it was great, great to have her there. So thank you, Councilmember Smith, for, um, encouraging her to do that. Um, also, I had a chance to volunteer at the TKPK 5K race on Sunday and despite the weather, it was a wonderful event. Everyone seemed happy and had a great time. Also raised money for the elementary schools and middle school, which was fabulous. And, um, I also, along with Councilmember Dabala, uh, attended a, um, Beltway Expansion Town Hall meeting that Councilmember Hucker organized. There were hundreds of people there, uh, estimates are between 800 and 1,000 people who came out to oppose the project. So it was, it was a great opportunity to discuss the project and the problems with the project and advocate for, um, the Board of Public Works and specifically the governor to, uh, consider alternatives and, um, a focus on transit, mass transit instead of, um, these expansion lanes. Um, there are, uh, if you look online, there are, um, some petitions that people have been circulating and letters that you can send, um, to advocate, advocate against that project. Uh, related to that, there was recently some information shared and I haven't had a chance to look at it yet in depth, but there, um, has been a release of, uh, report, um, for the Bus Transformation Project, including some of their findings and recommendations. And there are a series of open houses that people can go to. This is, um, a, a study looking at bus service and the goals of bus service throughout the entire metropolitan region. And the nearest, um, open house will be at the Silver Springs Civic Center on Thursday, May 20th, between 4:30 and 7:30 PM. So I hope people will have a chance to come out to that. I plan on trying to attend. They have noted that it is a child-friendly event, so you're welcome to bring your kids. I think it's just going to sort of be a I think it's just going to sort of be a, kind of in and out, have a chance to discuss and look at some information, not a formal seated meeting.
Isn't May 20th a Monday?
It might be. I have it listed as the 20th. All right, well, I think it's May 23rd, because I think it's the Thursday. But I will double-check and let you know. I put it on the 23rd, and I wrote down the 20th. And then finally, this weekend is the Tacoma Porch Festival, I believe, on Saturday, the 11th. I've got my dates all screwed up. I'm thinking next weekend and this weekend. So I'm double-checking, but it is this weekend, in the afternoon on May 11th. And there are a couple of locations specifically in Ward 3, in a different part of Ward 3 than there have been previously. Most of the locations are in Ward 1 and Ward 3 closer to Old Town. But there are a couple of locations along Carroll and Sherman that are sort of expanding the borders of where they've had this sort of event. So I encourage people to show up and see another part of Ward 3 as well in the city. And that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Two quick announcements. One, this Saturday, the 11th, from 10:00 to 3:00 PM at the library, is the Friends of the Library book sale, rain or shine, there. And secondly, this past weekend was the historic Tacoma-sponsored House and Garden Tour, which was mostly in Ward 1, which was really fun. And even though it was rainy, I guess the same rain that was with the TKPK 5K. And interestingly, a lot of the houses that had very small facades from out front were really, interestingly, opened up when you got in there. One other thing I wanted to mention, next week, several residents on Philadelphia Avenue have asked the mayor, and I think she's agreed to give them some extra time to speak during the public comment period, and that's about a petition in the neighborhood. And they've got about, I think, at the moment, 124 people have signed it, calling for some changes to the portion of Philadelphia Avenue that runs from Piney Branch up to where the college is and where you get into Silver Spring. And some of these are things that I and others have raised in the past, including wanting to reduce the speed limit, improving some of the intersections in terms of safety, resurfacing the road, which will happen when WSC finishes its project, but resurfacing it in a way that, at a minimum, would perhaps have sharrows or other bike-friendly kinds of markings, and improving the sidewalks and so on. Obviously, a lot of these things, since it's a state highway, are in their control. But I'm looking forward to the presentation next week. And maybe we'll at least be able to consider whether the council can chip in in some fashion to express support for the things that they advocate. So I'm just flagging in advance, and if anybody wants to read a petition signed by 124 people, can let me know now, or I'll circulate it before next week. Thank you.
Great.
I just wanted to quickly say, I did look it up, and it is May 23rd, not the 20th. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I just wanted to give a shout-out and thank our new Economic Development Manager for a successful Tacoma Park success fair. She got it in before the rain on Sunday, and it was a good gathering of individuals. And so I want to thank her and our rec department and our police department, because I know it was a joint effort. So I'll turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, yeah. And it was also a nice arrangement with Mike Houston of the Co-op, who did a lot of work bringing in some really special of the providers. So I'm happy about that. We're hoping for more people in the future, but I think that even the people who showed up from the different providers had never talked to each other before, so it's amazing what you learn. We did have the Bike to Work Day presentation proclamation today, and so that's May 17th. And it is true, every Friday and every Bike to Work Day, it rains. So let's see what happens. I just, I'm looking forward to not raining. Councilmember Kovar wanted me to kind of put on the record the fact that the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue will be receiving the $85,000 that we normally get from Montgomery County for, to help pay for operations. It doesn't at all pay for operations, but to help pay for operations. We have been assured by Robin Riley, who's the Director of Recreation, that the amount is included in the Montgomery County proposed FY 20 budget, although it's not specifically identified. We did have an enormously busy weekend last weekend. I did four events, I mean, and I didn't hit half of them. We do have great staff. I just, and at the 5K, I was able to give the little plaque to Doris Rogers. We think she's been here 49 years. It's like in August, it'll be 49 years. I mean, it's just amazing how long she's been around, been an absolute safety person for our young people that they look forward to seeing every day. And, you know, the chief always reminds us that she helped him cross the street when he was a kid going to school. So just very pleased with all of that and glad it can be acknowledged on Public Service Recognition Week. Thank you.
Terrific. All right.
I did forget one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. Before the merriment on Saturday at Ann Street and the porches, from 10:30 to 12:00, there'll be a work morning at Dorothy's Woods, pulling mustard garlic, which is a family-friendly activity, because it's not hard to identify, and it's, you don't need to be strong to pull it out. So anyone who wants to get a little exercise and some work in before the afternoon fun, come on down to the end, lower end of Woodland, 10:30 on Saturday.
Great. So now we'll go to our work session, and I'll turn it over to our mayor pro tem to discuss committee appointments.
Well, we have a long list tonight of upcoming appointments and, or reappointments to committees. The Noise Control Board, Anne Perro, Ward 3. And there will be two vacancies after, if she is appointed. And the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee has four vacancies now. Julie Bodie of Ward 1 and Paul Gunter of Ward 1 have applied for reappointment. And on the Recreation Committee, there are probably nine vacancies if these people were not reappointed. There's Priscilla Labowitz, Ward 1, Shawanda Oliver, Ward 5, Ray Scannell, Ward 1, Pat Rumbo, Ward 1, and Rachna Rikki of Ward 1. They've all submitted an application for reappointment. And if there are no objections, they will come on our agenda next week or so. Thank you.
Great. Any discussion of those?
Ward 2. We need Ward 2 on these committees.
We need everybody but Ward 1. Sorry, I'm just going to say it, especially on rec and nuclear free. So get to work over the weekend.
We're going to get into a broader discussion sometime about how to do that, right?
We've already discussed, we've already started and had a good meeting. We had started meeting last year and had put together, just to give a quick update, as I had mentioned before, put together a questionnaire or draft to send out to current and former committee members. Councilwoman Dibala, myself, city clerk, city manager, public works head, head of recreation. I'm forgetting somebody. Oh, and Roz Grisby, all met to discuss next steps. So, and we'll be meeting again soon to do this.
I would like to congratulate my colleague, Ward 5 councilmember, for having someone up for reappointment.
Yes. All right. So with that, we will adjourn, and have a nice evening.